Good evening, everyone. If you can hear me, somebody say "good evening".
Good evening, Stephen.
Alright, thanks. Alright.
Good evening.
This is Hobbs, Big Abysse. Good to see everybody out this evening. We're hoping that we'll have another exciting, interactive Bible class. Let me get my screen up for you. So this is where we stopped on last week, Tuesday. I know that some individuals either due to teaching responsibilities, or probably just having not been there on Sunday, would not have been able to share, if they hadn't been able to finish the homework, to share their personal songs. So if there is anyone who did not get to share and would like to share, we're going to have us five minutes before class is over. Just please, you can send me a message in the chat personally to let me know, and I'll give you that opportunity to share. Then if you don't want to share, but you have done it, I'm asking if you can just send it to me personally. You want to put all again together. If you were there on Sunday, you'd have realised what a wonderful job the class did in putting together these personal songs. And I think it would be a waste to just do them and then dispose of them. So if you can, please send them to me, so that I can put them together. That's much appreciated. It's been a while since I have updated you on the scores. And I don't want you to feel that I'm telling you that they're getting points and they're not properly being registered. So I need to give you a feedback in regards to how the points are going. For those who weren't here on Sunday, you missed a very exciting and competitive revision session where we had a quiz. I'm going over what was studied thus far. And it was very encouraging to me to recognise how many, how much of the information you guys have recalled. It's been, we started, we've been at it for a few weeks. So I expected there to be rust, but I was pleasantly surprised at what was recalled. So I'm going to give you a breakdown of the scores, that between book chapters and verse. Before we do so, just want to make some honourable mentions for what I would call the Revision Quiz MVPs. This may not just be determined by the amount of answers that were given correctly, but also by the vim and vigour with which those answers and the participation took place. For MVP for book, we have Brother Lacount. Big Abysse's Brother Lacount. For chapter, Brother David Tennant. He grabbed the chapter flag during this revision and he waved it almost single-handedly. Good job, good job, Brother David. And for verse, I was torn. I was going to give it to Britannia, but Brother Smith, without raising hand capability, did a marvellous job, did a marvellous job. So I'm going to give this one to Brother, Brother Smith, but I know that no love is lost between the members of verse. But it was, it was, it was very good, the scores for those who weren't there. Oh, David said that Sandra gave him all the answers. So I need to change this to Sandra being the head VP and David being the mouthpiece. But so the scores were of the quiz. Chapter one with 96 points. Oh, that sounds like I said, chapter one. Well, chapter was the victor with 96 points. Followed closely by verse with 82 points, and then book with 80 points. So those points were added directly to the points that have been accumulated already for just reminding you, attendance, scripture reading, classwork, password, and homework or group work as well. So all those points have been properly registered. So we're going to give you a rundown of the scores before we get into what we're doing this evening. So in third place, with 392 points, we have verse, Big Abysse's verse. In 392 points is a lot. In second place, with 399 points, just seven points ahead, we have book, who are our reigning champions up till, up till Sunday. And in first place, I mean, there's no, nobody left. With 407 points, just eight points ahead, we have chapter. The chapter has taken over the lead. Has taken over the lead. It's not, not a massive lead. And we have quite a few weeks left to go. But I like, I like the fact that we've been having changes in, in, in the people. Don't worry, Brother Smith, I will soon be sending in my findings so that we can, you can check. Versatile, Brother Smith says last week. Please don't pull a charm on me. So good job, chapter. Book and verse, keep it up. And we shall see how things will go for the next week. I'll try to update the scores every week so that you can keep a better track of where you are. So we have been looking for those who maybe knew. We have been looking at Lost, a case study. And we have been looking at the parable of the lost son, the lost coin, and the lost sheep, which is found in Luke chapter 15. At the end of this study, everybody's supposed to know where the parable of the lost things is found. Luke chapter 15. And as we usually reiterate, we're taking a three-pronged study approach. So we're looking at diagnosis, where we identify the problems or issues that can be found with the characters in the study. We're doing correlation, where we align those issues with our own similar issues. And then we prescribe, where we try to find solutions. And we've been looking at the sheep. We are looking, the diagnosis that we're doing now is the bark bug. And we've been on that for a few weeks. Where the bark bug is hesitancy or course correction that is, that brings about itself due to worry and doubt. And we've been looking at some prescriptive methods. The first one was pill of present tense, where we focus on what we have now. We focus on what we can do now. And we try not to worry about the things we cannot control, the things that we have no power over. Then we look at the pill of past providence, where the focus is to look at what God has done for us in the past and use that as motivation to deal with our problems in the present or in the future. But knowing that God has been there for me, knowing that God has always had my back, would provide me with the kind of assurance to face similar problems as they arise now and in the future. And the last prescriptive method, which we'll start, which we'll start to look at today, is pill of post-promises. Pill of post-promises. We're going to look at some scriptures to give us an idea as to what exactly are we considering when we look at this pill of post-promises. Need one reader, please? Alright, Sister Smith, go ahead.
Hebrews 10, verse 23. "Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering; for he who promised is faithful."
Thank you very much, Sister Smith. Well read, as per usual. So yes, so the passage says, "Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering; for he who promised is faithful." And what we want to look at when we look at post, the pill of post-promises, is the idea firstly, that God has made promises to us that we can look forward to. That God is someone who keeps his promises. And that God expects us to meet him somewhere so as to access those promises. So the promises that God makes and the things that he asks us to do, do not earn us the benefits of those promises, but rather gives us access to the benefits of those promises. So the first passage we'll look at in Hebrews 10:23 says, "Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering; for he who promised is faithful." So as is our practice, let us see if we can dig a little deeper into the words that are used so as to get a complete understanding of what exactly the Hebrew writer is trying to get us to understand. So it says, "Let us hold fast." And the word "hold fast" means, it's a verb. It means to hold down. And essentially, what it means is to keep secure, keep firm position of. So "hold fast" literally means to hold down, to put your weight upon to ensure that what is being held will not move. Keeps it firm, it keeps it secure. So think of, think of something that you want to make sure will not move, will stay stable. That is the kind of "hold fast" that is being used here. So the impression that is being given by the writer is, keep firm, keep secure, keep possession of. And what is being asked, or what this verb is being referring, or is referring to, is confession. It says, "hold fast, keep secure, the confession." And what this word here, "confession", means is acknowledgement. An acknowledgement. And this acknowledgement can be a profession. So a declaration essentially of what my position is. Or it can be a confession of said thing. But the idea that is brought across is that this profession or confession is something that is made clear to others. This is acknowledged. I let, I make it known that this is where I stand. So "hold fast, hold down, keep secure", this acknowledgement. Acknowledgement of what? Profession of what? Of our hope. The word "hope" here means to anticipate, usually with pleasure. To anticipate, usually with pleasure. And it speaks to expectation or confidence. And when used in scripture, very regularly, it speaks to the confidence that comes as a result of the salvation bought by Jesus. So when we see this hope here, especially New Testament wise, it speaks to the hope that is provided through salvation that Jesus purchased. So the acknowledgement of our hope, the acknowledgement of our expectation, of our confidence of salvation, should be held fast, should be kept secure, should remain. And then "without wavering" is used here. Without wavering. And it, it means not leaning. Speaks to firm and unmoved. So you see, the writer here is stamping down on the idea of security. So he says, "hold fast without wavering", complete security. Be firm in the, in the confession of this expectation, this confidence that we have in salvation. Be unmoving, do not lean. But why? Why should we be so secure? Why should we not waver? Why should we have confidence? That is now explained in the latter part of the verse. So the first thing that is used here is the, is the word "for", which is a conjunction. And we know that conjunctions link words or group of words. So the word "for" here is linking what is said initially with what is said after. And it links it by saying that what follows is the reason for what is said initially. So the reason we should hold fast, the reason we should not waver in the confidence that we have in the acknowledgement of this hope is because he who promised is faithful. That is why there is security. That is why we should not be moved. We should not lean. The word "promised" here, that long word in the Greek, it means to announce upon, to assert something respecting oneself. That sounds a lot, a little complicated. Essentially, what it means is to promise of one's own accord to engage voluntarily. So to assert something respecting oneself essentially means to put forward something that is in reference to something you are capable of doing or you intend to carry out. So I said, if I were to assert something respecting myself, I could say that for next week's Bible class, I am going to update the scores of the teams. That would be me doing this long verb here. And as I said, it means to promise of one's own accord to engage voluntarily. So this now establishes that you have not been forced into this promise. I am not doing this because I, someone makes me feel obligated. I'm not doing this because someone has, has blackmailled me into doing it. I'm not doing this because of pressure placed on, on me. This is of my own accord. This is voluntary. That's the kind of promise that is used here. And clearly, that is a promise that aligned itself with the character of God. We can't make God do anything, even if we wanted to. But it is reassuring that the promises that God makes are of his own volition. These are things that he has decided that he wants to promise. And he asserts that upon himself, on his own name, as a means of reassuring us that that promise will be fulfilled. It's essentially a seal of approval with his name. And what a seal of approval usually establishes is that depending on who gives the seal, will determine how valid the, the thing that is sealed is in regards to what it claims to be. So if I give my seal of approval on a movie and I say, "Yes, this is an excellent movie", if I am viewed as a good critique of movies, then my seal of approval will carry weight. People will look at the seal and say, "Hey, Stephen is the one who gave his seal of approval here." So clearly, this movie is shot. Similarly, if Sister Hobbs gave her a seal of approval on food, I not, we ask two questions. I eat that up same time, because as far as I'm concerned, Sister Hobbs' seal of approval when it comes down to food is impeccable. God places his seal of approval on his promises. It's not on David, it's not on Stephen, it's not on Brother Alfonso Grenell. He uses his impeccable nature as the validity for carrying out his own promises. And essentially, what he's saying is, "You can hold me to this. Don't hold Brother Grenell, don't hold anybody else. I am the one. When I make a promise, you can't hold me to it." And that, that there is ultimate reassurance. And then it says, "The one who promised is faithful." And "faithful" here is an adjective. Objectively, it means trustworthy. And subjectively, it means trustful. I have, have some points that I want to give away. If someone can explain to me the difference between objectively and subjectively faithful. Anybody can tell me what the difference between being objectively faithful and subjectively faithful? Go ahead, Brother David.
Alright. So objectively faithful is when, alright, different. So subjectively faithful is when I believe somebody is faithful. Objective, so it says, "My belief in the person is faithful." Objectively faithful is when the person is faithful, independent of whether I believe so or not.
Not bad, not bad, not bad. Anybody, anybody can, can help him out?
Objectively faithful is to be faithful. All it, to, to be faithful. Subjectively faithful is when you're selective.
Alright, I hear you, I hear you. Um, Sister Endala Dunn, if you want to speak?
Uh, yes, I was just going to say that objectively faithful, um, there is no bias, there is no prejudice. You are actually standing, um, standing, you know, sort of afar off and you're looking at the thing and you are not placing any value judgement on it. It is just so. It, it is faithful and you know, there isn't any, um, other value judgement, please start it.
Okay, okay. Brother Lacount, go ahead.
Hand up.
Oh, okay, and then Brother Smith. Go ahead, Brother Lacount.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, usually when something is objective, it can be quantitative. So there's ways to objectively view something to determine whether it be faithful or, you know, anything else. You have a way to observe and quantitate the sort of level of whatever attribute it is. While subjective becomes more of a personal opinion from, from an individual. So things may subjectively change from individual to individual, while objective things can be measured and observed and quantitated.
Okay, okay, excellently worded. Brother Brandon and then Brother Smith.
Um, good night, everyone. In terms of subjective, as Brother Lacount said, it may vary based on the opinion of everyone, of each individual. While objective is, is, it doesn't vary. It is, it's like a standard, like a fact, so to speak.
Alright, well worded as well. Um, Brother Smith?
Okay. Um, I'm looking at objective in the sense of reliability in terms of, um, yeah. Whatever the condition, whatever, whoever it is, uh, there is a reliability factor. So we can depend on this. So that would be the objective thing. And then the, the subjectivity side, no, varies with conditions. Whoever is involved, either, either way. So one of them is more reliability, that is not related to factors. This is something you can rely on, you can trust, you can accept as fact. And then the subjectivity part would relate to varying conditions, where the goalpost might change.
Okay, okay, well said as well, Brother Smith. Natasha, or that was what you're going to say?
Um, it's a little similar. Um, I'm thinking subjective faithfulness or faith might be, as far as my experiences can tell me, as far as the situations that I have been brought through, that's what I'd use to weigh the level of faith that I have. Um, but in terms of, um, objective faith, I'd probably view it as, even if the, the current challenge that I have outweighs the magnitude of the challenges that I had before, um, I guess just having faith in an all-powerful God, I'd say nothing is impossible. So I'm not just weighing it on my, I'm not just basing it on my previous experiences of having had faith and being brought through the situation.
Okay, okay, good job, good job. Excellent answers from everybody, but I have not gotten the answer that I want. So subjectively and objectively, depending on how you define them, you would all be right. But that is not the definition that I am looking for, or the definition that is used in the Greek. The objectively and subjectively here speaks to object or subject of a sentence. So the subject of the sentence being "I", or the object of the sentence being "him". So faith, when referring to something objectively, means that I can have faith in it because it is trustworthy. So the object of my faith provides me with trustworthiness. I can trust you when you're the object of my faith. Whereas when used subjectively, it means that I am full of trust. I trust in you. So for example, I, I have faith in God because I am the subject. Trustful here means I am full of trust. Whereas because God is the object, he is trustworthy. If God were the subject, it would mean that God is full of trust. Whereas if God is the object, it means that he can be trusted. So whereas objectively and subjectively, depending on the definition, you are not wrong. In regards to the difference in how faith is used biblically speaking, it can either mean objectively something that can be trusted or subjectively something that trusts, something that is full of trust. So I hope that, that, and if you see, for example, definitions where objectively or subjectively is used, rather than it focusing on bias, which is how objectively or subjectively is usually used. Once it's used in English, it would be speaking to objects or subjects. So is it me, I carrying out the action? That's where it's subjectively. Or object, is the action being carried out on me? I hope that that was clear enough and that it wasn't unnecessarily confusing. Any questions, or it was good, clear? Alright, I guess it was clear. So in this...
Sister Sandra, go.
Sister Sandra, go ahead. Sister Sandra, no?
Mistake, Steve, mistake.
Oh, okay, okay. So just to, to be clear then, in this cir, in the circumstance as is used in this passage, would faithful be used objectively or subjectively? Point for the answer.
Object.
Objectively, alright. So yes, that's, that's right, Brother Smith. Alright, so just recapping that, the reason for us holding fast, the reason for us being secure in our hope, in acknowledgement of our hope, is because the one who promised, the one who sealed it, the one who established what we will be getting can be trusted, is worthy of our trust. So we can be secure because we know that God is trustworthy. And that is essentially the first pillar for the pill of post-promises. And that is essentially the first pillar for the pill of post-promises. Establishing that the one making the promises is trustworthy. We can trust his promises because if we cannot trust his promises, then this pill is of no use to us because it don't matter what is promised. I'm sure all of us have an individual in our lives that we wouldn't call a liar, but we'd say that their, their dependability is miniscule. So when you hear that person tell you something, you have to take it with fifty grain of salt and three peg of sugar. You don't, you're not going to make any plans based on the thing that they tell you because as far as you're concerned, lightning struck you three times before it actually comes into being. Those promises have no validity because as far as you are concerned, they are not going to come to pass. They're not going to come to pass. I see, brother, okay, so in the chat I see Brother David saying, why post? Alright, so post for two reasons. One, post playing on the, on the word postage or posting, something that has been delivered. And the reason that we want to play on that particular part of the word is because a promise of God is a delivered promise. So when God gives a promise, once the criteria for said promise to come into effect has come into effect, then that promise can be considered delivered. It's not something that you're going to have to sit down and wait on. It's not something that you have to contemplate as to whether it's going to come into being or not. Once God establishes that this is the parameters for this to come into existence, you can consider said promise to be delivered once those circumstances come into being. And that is a powerful, a powerful ideology to, to support the kind of behaviour that we should have. If we wholeheartedly believe that once God has made his promise and once we do what is required for said promise to come into existence, that it will come into existence, then that changes the way that we approach the promises. One of the issues is that more often than not, we doubt the delivery. We question whether it actually is going to come into play the way God says it is going to come into play. And then that by extension affects how well we put ourselves in a position to actually access the benefits of said promise. So one of the posts speaks to knowing that God delivers essentially and the confidence that comes through that delivery. And then the second post is, speaks to coming after, coming after. And for most, if not all, and maybe wrong, most, if not all, promises by God requires us to be somewhere, requires us to do something, require us to have a particular frame of mind. We, the po- the promise comes post something. There is something we have to do to get access to that promise. And I want to make it very clear, we are not earning these things. Everything that God promises us is a privilege. None of these things we, we deserve, none of these, none of these things can we buy. None of these things are, um, are worked for. But God gives them to us. However, there is a caveat that we have to do something, be somewhere, or have a particular change of mind, um, or frame of mind. I don't know if that helps David in that regard. Okay, I see, thank you. Alright, so, so as I said, the first thing, the first confidence that we have in this pill or the way for the pill to work, we have to first accept that the one making the promise can be trusted. One reader, please, can raise your hand. Go ahead, Brother Jason.
He did not waver at the promise of God through unbelief, but was strengthened in faith, giving glory to God and being fully convinced that what he had promised, he was also able to perform.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Brother Jason. So Romans four, verse twenty and twenty-one, sorry, I never announced it initially. So we're going to look at this passage and we're going to see another pillar on which this pill performs. And yes, pillar there is a play onwards. Alright, so he did not waver at the promise of God through unbelief, but was strengthened in faith, giving glory to God. Just for context, and in your own time, you can read Romans chapter four. This is speaking to Abraham and the promise that God gave him re-extending his nation, giving him descendants, et cetera. What I want us to focus on, however, is the God aspect and not so much the Abraham aspect, alright? They said, he did not waver at the promise of God through unbelief. Waver here, that complex, uh, I'm not going to try and pronounce that. It's a verb and it means to separate thoroughly, separate thoroughly. When I saw this, I was like, what? That, what does have to do with waiver? What does have to do with waiver? Well, what it means essentially is not a physical separation, but a, an internal separation. So it speaks to being at variance with oneself. So caught between two minds, so that is where the separation occurs. You are now in two minds, you have been separated thoroughly in regards to the actions that you want to carry out. There is hesitancy, there is doubt because you don't know which option to decide. Psychology speak, psychologically speaking, there's a, um, something called cognitive dissonance. And it speaks to a conflict resulting from incongruous beliefs and attitudes held simultaneously. So when you have a belief or an attitude that are going against each other, that's what incongruous there means, that they're conflicting, contrasting. When you have a belief or an attitude that are there in contrast or conflict, you end up in a position of cognitive dissonance where you essentially are at war with yourself. You don't know what to do. An example of this may be where you're at, you're at school and the guys are playing football on the corridor and you love football and your brain tells you that when football is played, you need to join in. But the shoes that you're wearing are the brand new school shoes that your parents bought for you. And your parents told you definitively that you should not play football in your school shoe. So now you have conflicting beliefs. You have the belief that you're supposed to listen to your parents and you're supposed to not play football in the new school shoe. And then you have the belief that when football is playing, you need to play football. You have the desire inside that is telling you, go, go and play football. You're not going to mash up the shoes, your parents not going to know. That conflicting, those conflicting beliefs lead to you wavering, lead to you being separated thoroughly, leads to you being in two minds. And what the writer is saying here is that Abraham was not like this. Abraham was not in two minds. Abraham was not at variance with himself. He did not hesitate, he did not doubt.
Um, Stephen.
Go ahead, Brother Smith.
Sorry, I don't have a hand, as you know.
No one.
Yeah, this cognitive dissonance is a concept that is heavy in, in the marketing sphere where it applies to like when you make big decisions, like if you buy a very expensive car. Um, you kind of, there's a guilt, there's a, yeah, I've done this, but I, I just, should I have done it, et cetera? So the marketing people tell you that whenever people make big decisions, one of the things that you need to do is to give them affirmation. So you need to follow it up, that's, that's sort of where, um, post-sales, um, service comes in. And once a person has bought this refrigerator, somebody needs to come around and assure them that they have done the right things, that you are there for them, et cetera. Otherwise, many instances or some instances, people might actually return, um, the goods because of that conflict. So it's a, it's a powerful, um, concept that when you have these challenging decisions, if you don't have reinforcement, you could actually get swayed, um, away from the decision you made.
Good point, excellent, I'm sure you're doing a better job than I am who, in regard to not replacing big words with other big words. My apologies if I lent to some confusion, I'll try my best to make it simpler. But, um, cognitive dissonance, this idea of wavering or being, um, separated thoroughly, being at variance with oneself, is a concept that is heavily, um, spoken of in scripture in reference to the spirit and the flesh. That as human beings, the flesh is something that we cannot avoid. And the minute that we try to please both the spirit and the flesh, we are going to be at dissonance because those things can't, they cannot, they can't operate on the same, the same wavelength, it's either one or the other. And a lot of the, the hesitancy and the doubt and the war within ourselves that we have as Christians is a lot of the times in our attempt to try and pull the line. So I want to, to be spiritual, but I also want to be fleshly. So the things that I know that I should give up to be the kind of Christian that I need to be is, is very difficult for me to give it up because I am at war with myself. I have been separated thoroughly. So the flesh is on one side making demands and the spirit is on one side making demands. And I have not gone over to one side holistically. So I'm not ignoring the spirit and saying, okay, flesh, just do what you want to do. I still feel guilty when I do the wrong, I still try, I still ask for forgiveness, I still repent when I do the wrong. But a lot of the wrongs that I end up doing, the reason I do them is because I have not gone all over the other side of the spirit. And I'm not saying that if we go all over, go that side, that we're not going to make mistakes. But a lot of the times, we leave a toe, or we leave a foot, or we leave more of our torso, torso over on the side of our flesh and we are torn between two. Paul described it very effectively by saying that the things that I don't want to do are the things that I find myself doing. And the things that I want to do, I don't find myself doing. And I think he said, what matter of man am I? Or what manner of man am I? That I don't think there's a better description of cognitive dissonance. And that is what is being highlighted here in the word waiver. Scripture uses that, that definition to establish the frame of mind that Abraham was in in regards to him not wavering. There was no doubt, there was no hesitancy, there was oneness of mind, complete belief. No, no con- incongruous beliefs or attitudes. And it says at the promise of God, so he did not waver at the promise of God. Promise here comes similar word to the promise that was used in the previous verse, Hebrews ten twenty-three. And it's an announcement, the act of promising a promise, good or blessing. So he did not waver at this announcement that God made, this act of promising, this good or blessing that God promised to him. And in this specific scenario, this is the co- the promise of his descendants. Um, that his descendants be numerous as the stars and as the sun. And please note that this was at a stage where Abraham was very old. So this is not a twenty-three-year-old Abraham who presumes himself to be very virile, where he can, um, he's not questioning his ability to have children. This is an old Abraham where, um, physically speaking, he should not be capable of carrying all this up. But the passage says, in spite of that, he did not waver. And then the, it goes more specifically to establish the way he would have wavered if he did. So it says through unbelief. And unbelief here means faithlessness. And faithlessness here can be negatively or positively. And when used negatively, it speaks to an absence. So when you hear of negative, think of something being subtracted, like in mathematics, and positively think of something being added. So faithlessness, when spoken of negatively, it speaks to disbelief, belief or a lack of faith. Faith is being subtracted. Whereas when it is spoken of positively, it speaks to unfaithfulness and it speaks to disobedience. So essentially, sin is being added. So when you see this faith, faith, this word here, it can be used to, to refer to a lack of faith or unfaithfulness in regards to disobedience. And in this, based on this context, it gives the idea of it being the form where it is, he did not waver through a lack of faith, but was strengthened into giving glory to God.
Um, Stephen.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I, I wasn't quite getting what you were saying about the positive, the positively. Right, because of unfaithfulness, disobedience, to me it sounded negative.
Okay, alright, let me, let me clarify that and then I'll go to David's question. So positively and negatively here, just like subjectively and objectively have different meanings. So the negatively and positively here do not speak to right or wrong, bad or good. It speaks to added or subtracted, so like the idea of a negative sign or a positive sign. So you know, with it, um, with atoms, you, you add a positive sign, that means that a ion with a positive sign means that an electron was added, whereas with a negative sign, it was subtracted. I think that is right, I probably shouldn't trouble chemistry. But negatively here speaks to something being taken away, positively means something being added. So let me use what I know, psychology. Positive reinforcement and negative reinforcement are both good things. Positive reinforcement reinforces by adding. So this is usually a rewarding scenario. So your child does something good, you positively reinforce them by giving them ice cream, by giving them candy, by allowing them to watch television, something has been added. So that is positive reinforcement. Negative reinforcement is reinforcing by taking something away. But because it is reinforcement, then you take away something bad. So for example, a teacher might negatively reinforce by saying, hey, no homework today. So negative reinforcement is still good, but the negative here speaks to the subtraction of something. Similarly, you have positive and negative punishment. Positive punishment is the addition of something, so a beating. Extra homework, that is detention, you have added something, that is positive punishment. Punishment is still bad, but where it said punish positive, it is speaking to something being added. Whereas negative punishment is the taking away of something that would be desired. So no TV time, take away the phone, those are negative forms of punishment. So both positive and negative punishment is bad, both positive and negative reinforcement is good. But positive speaks to the addition of something, whereas negative speaks to the subtraction. So similarly, when we look at this word that means faithlessness, when it is used negatively, it speaks to something being taken away. In this sense, it speaks to the faith. So when you don't have faith, when your faith is gone, when your faith is subtracted, you have disbelief. And this is the same word. However, when it is used positively, it is not speak- And this is the same word. However, when it is used positively, it is not speaking to a subtraction of faith. It is not speaking to a lack of faith, but rather it is speaking to the addition of sin, disobedience. So when you are positively showing this word that means faithlessness, it doesn't mean lack of faith. But it means addition of sin, addition of disobedience. So a lot of the times you see this word being in reference to individuals who believed in God but just weren't doing what God was saying. I don't know if that lends any clarity to, to it, Sister Indala?
No, it's still not clear. I, I will, I will think about it again and get back to you, but it's, it's not clear to me.
Okay, um, I'll message you personally and see if I can find a simple.
Okay.
Maybe David has his hand up, so I'm hoping that he's going to lend some clarity on the matter.
My head is up long time since you said it don't relate to this point. And I must admit, I'm fully too clear on this point, you know. Um, my, my hand is up somewhere, but I've made the, the point about, um. About the marketing and the positive reinforcement. So the cognitive dissonance, you make a big decision and the positive reinforcement after. He was a term that I don't remember, it sounded quite nice. But my, my, my question then was, um, are we engaging in that kind of positive sales reinforcement with our new Christians when they make the biggest decision of their life and become Christians and having the way we're going to doubt thereafter? Are we there as a church to give them that positive sales reinforcement at, at, at the end? And could that be a reason why, why, why we have so many people not staying the course or leaving shortly after becoming Christian?
Amen, amen, amen.
Excellent point, David, excellent point. And conveniently speaking, that would be the greatest point of dissonance for those new Christians. Having now all of these habits, all of these behaviors of a, a past life that you are being told or you are, are learning through scripture that these things are not pleasing to God. And albeit God doesn't expect you to change overnight. But biologically speaking, these things are habits. These things are ingrained within you and it can be very discouraging to you as a new Christian. If you don't feel as though individuals are trying to help you to recognize that, hey, we understand that it, it's going to be difficult initially, we understand that you may fall, we understand what is the right decision. Don't worry about it, man, you get there in time. If I feel like, boy, I start this and I just keep slipping. Or I keep feeling like, boy, my body don't want to do the things that the Bible is telling me to do. And there's nobody to, to help me to recognize that, hey, or to, to reassure me that it gets better over time. Then they may very well just say, boy, this not gonna work out. Excellent point, um, Brother David. I don't know if you want to say something as well, Brother Smith?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind, um. Yeah, it, it, it's the, it's the doubt as to whether you made the right decision. So even before you start to actually have, if you want to look at it as confirmation, because you've, you slipped. So even before that, there is a big problem. Um, and that's why some people don't actually come, come in, because they are saying, I can't sustain it, I don't, I don't have the confidence that, you know, I can live that kind of life. So is that, that major thing? And then having made the decision, the feeling is, whoa, what have I done? No, I'm, you know, I, I run the risk of being a hypocrite and, you know, somebody mentioned a verse that says, you know, once you have gone and tasted the thing and it's your turn, but all of those confusions come in. And so it is critical actually, um, that there is some reinforcement, uh, in, in, in the midst. So I agree with David, it is, that concept is, um, if acted upon could actually save a lot of souls.
Ex- excellent re- reinforcement, Brother Smith. All right, so, um, I'm going to see if I can, I can lend some clarity to this, ignoring the negatively and positively, and just going through the usage of the word. So the Greek word is epistia. And what I just wanted to make very clear is that when it is used, it can mean two things. It can mean an individual that doesn't believe. So someone who lacks belief. Or it can mean someone who is disobedient. And the disobedient here implies belief. So for example, an unbeliever versus a sinning Christian. So the first one is, I don't believe, the second one is, I am disobedient. So when this Greek word is used, it can be used in both of the settings. I hope that, that at least gives some clarity on the surface. So just to reiterate it before we go to the other part. It is stating that Abraham was in one mind, there was no wavering, there was no doubt, there was no hesitation at the promise that God gave to him. And his wavering would have been as a result of unbelief or lack of faith. And this could easily be justified given Abraham's age. So in spite of his age, when God promised Abraham that he would fill the earth with descendants, he believed wholeheartedly. And it goes on to say, but was strengthened in faith, giving glory to God. All right, all of this come of one time. Um, so strengthened here means to empower. Can mean to enable, to increase in strength, or to make or be strong. So Abraham was made strong in his, in his belief. With here being persuasion, i.e. credence. And credence means mental acceptance as true or real. So when you have credence, it is a mental acceptance as true or real. So that's, he was strengthened in his mental acceptance of God's promise to be true. Also speaks to a moral conviction of the truthfulness of God. And that goes back to the first pillar that we looked at, where we hold God to being trustworthy, because we believe his word to be true. That's why we trust him. It said, he was strengthened in faith, giving glory to God. And giving there simply means to give. Glory here means a good opinion concerning one, resulting in praise, honor and glory. So because Abraham believed in God, he had a good opinion concerning God to the point where he would praise, honor and glory God and give praise, honor and glory to God. And we can see that more often than not in regards to how we treat people's feel of approval. If we view the feel to be of significance, we have no cons, we have no issue sharing it with others. Because we're not afraid that when they experience what we have experienced, they're going to say, what? Nothing will go so. The, once we are confident in someone or something and we believe it to be as is said, then we have no qualms sharing it with somebody. If I, an example, Kemar, I don't remember, you remember the sermon Kemar preached a few last, um, the last month specifically, where he spoke about being locked out of his vehicle. And he spoke about a locksmith who he called, who came and he locked him, uh, he opened the vehicle for him. I had an incident where I broke a key in the door. I called Kemar. I said, Kemar, you have any locksmiths that can help with a situation like this? Kemar immediately said, I will give you the number for the locksmith that helped me out. Why did Kemar feel confident in telling me that? Because Kemar has experienced the, the trueness essentially of this individual's craft. I experienced that for myself as well. So now I have no problem praising, honoring or giving glory to this man as a locksmith. Because I have experienced, I have a good opinion concerning him. So not only was Abraham strengthened in his belief, he believed to the point that he had a good opinion of God. And mind you, this was before the promise was even, was even delivered. And that is why I use the word post to speak of deliver. We need to get to the point where because of our faith in God, we can give glory to God, have a good opinion regarding, just because he has made a promise to us. Not even having to wait until the promise is delivered. We can give praise, we can honor and give glory to God, knowing that, hey, once God gives a promise, it is going to come true. That is powerful. And a lot of the times, we do not get the things that God promises us because the state that we need to be in to access those promises is limited by our belief in God's promises. So we don't get it because we didn't have the belief that we needed to put us in that mindset. And then when we don't get it, we doubt God having fulfilled his promise. And then that puts us in a even worse position. We need to be like Abraham, where we don't waver at the promise of God. But rather, we are strengthened in our conviction of the truthfulness of God, which leads to us praising God, having a good opinion of him, even before we get the thing that is promised to us. Any questions, any queries? All right, let's see. If we can do one more, we can finish this verse before Bible class, the next verse. Verse twenty-one, it says, and being fully convinced that what he had promised, he was also able to perform. Fully convinced here means it's a verb and it means to carry out fully in evidence. To carry out fully in evidence. Ie, it means to completely assure or convince. So essentially, the idea is that I present as much evidence as is necessary to have you be completely assured or convinced. So I'm sure, for example, if David or Sister Sanjia are looking for someone to babysit, that individual is going to have to provide enough, if they don't know them, enough information, enough evidence to completely assure and convince them that they have the capability to, to babysit effectively. I don't even know if that can be done on the first time, but that is the idea being brought out here. If you are fully convinced, think of it as having been provided with all the evidence required to believe wholeheartedly. And that is the state that Abraham is established to have been. He was completely assured, completely convinced, in a state where all the evidence was in front of him. And what was he fully convinced of? Says that what he, God being here, being he here, had promised, he was also able to perform. We know the word promise here is to assert something respecting oneself. We looked at that, the previous verse. Previous, um, verse that we, I mean, book that we looked at, Hebrews chapter ten. And it's essentially, it means the promise. So what God promised, he was also able to perform. And able here is an adjective and it means powerful or capable. And it can mean that literally or figuratively. And in simple terms, it means having the power to do something. So Abraham was fully convinced, completely assured that God had the power, had the capability to make his descendants as numerous as the sand and the stars. There was no doubt in his mind. And that is the second pillar of the pillar of post-promises. The first pillar is that God can be trusted, that God keeps his promises. The second pillar is that God is capable of carrying the promises, of carrying out the promises that he makes. So not only do I not have to worry that God is going to falsely promise me anything, I don't have to worry that any of the promises that he makes cannot be carried out. Everything that God tells me he is going to do, he is capable of doing. So there is even less reason to doubt. If I were to tell someone in here that I am going to, I, I thought, if I said, tell the class that I am paying for all of us to go to Disney, to Disney World, would you believe me?
Yes.
Would anybody apart from Natasha believe me? And I'm sure Natasha is believing me so that she can't hold me to it. Would you believe that I'm, that I'm going to pay for everybody here to go to Disney World?
No, I wouldn't believe.
Why wouldn't you believe me, Annabelle?
You'd have to show me evidence.
What right now, what right now limits your belief that I will do that?
Um, I guess there is nothing to, to show that, yes, you can and or no, you can't, it's just that I just don't believe.
Well, if I were a multi-billionaire.
Then yes, I would believe.
Would you be more inclined to believe that?
Yes, I would.
Yes, because all of a sudden, I now have the means to carry it out. You may not, you may not believe that I'm going to do it, you know, but at least that door has opened in your belief, because you view me as capable of carrying it out. Now, the only thing you need to worry about is if I will keep my word. Essentially, where we are standing is God has been opened both doors. God is telling us, hey, I am capable of doing everything I promise you. And also, I am trustworthy. So when I promise you the thing that I am capable of doing, I will do it. You don't have to worry about me not doing it. All right, I see something in the chat. This is the last thing we're going to look at. Before we close, David says, is it that we waver in our belief about God's ability or willingness to keep his promises, or in whether we have met the preconditions? Or in whether the promises are applicable to my particular situation? Those are excellent questions, David. And I am glad that the passages that we will look at later on will in some way, shape or form address these questions, so that I don't have to provide an answer right now. So now that we have established the two main pillars, what I want us to do for the next class on, on Sunday is that we're going to start looking at some promises. And we're going to look at some very famous promises. And why is it that we don't believe these promises the way that we should believe them if we accept the two first pillars? So if we accept that God will keep his promises and have the power to carry out these promises, then why isn't our mindset, as David is asking, why, why are we wavering? Is it a doubt in God's ability or willingness, or is it that we have not met the preconditions? So we're going to look at some very famous promises that God has made, some of the preconditions that are established and where exactly we are falling short. And how can we get to the point where we can live comfortably? I mean, these are wonderful promises. As David, I remember David made a comment once, that if he tells his children that they are going to Disney World for Christmas, they're excited. that they are going to Disney World for Christmas, they're excited from now. Jump up and down, boom, flick, all these things. This is the kind of, remember, we're looking at worrying and doubt. If we learn to take God's promises the way Sean and Elliot take David's promises, then not only will there be a removal of doubt and worry, there will be joy, there will be excitement. And that is what, that is what we want these promises of God to provide us with, the joy and the excitement that comes from knowing that God will will carry out the things that we request. Password? Oh, we get, I I like when we're seeing fresh faces in the listener. Go ahead, Brother Jason.
Pill of post-promises.
Excellent, excellent. And now Sister Smith, don't mind, because we see a book.
Amen.
Alright, so, um. The password for next class, and class on Sunday, is willing and able. Willing and able. Alright, thank you. I was supposed to save five minutes for anybody, but I never heard anybody say that they want to, so. Um, if anybody else has written their song, they can feel free to send it to me. Um, thank you for participating as per usual, and looking forward to class on Sunday. I'll now hand over to closing prayer. Thank you.
Brother Jason, you're done for the closing prayer.
Please bow me. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight. And even during times where we are unable to physically come together due to this pandemic, you provide us a way. You provide us the means to uplift one another, to encourage each other, to gain access to the knowledge this brother has prepared for us, and to grow as Christians, to learn and to be there. We ask, Lord, that you allow our hearts and our minds and our spirit to be open to the lesson today. That we start to examine our own belief or disbelief in the promises you've said that you will provide us. That we will more accurately reflect the belief that Jesus Christ had as He walked this earth. We thank you so much, Lord, for the the amazing blessings you bestow upon us every day. We ask that you would allow this time together as brothers and sisters in Christ to fuel us for the rest of our our week. That when we are faced with challenges, when we are faced with difficulties that may cause us to look less Christian than we would like, that this time together would be the fuel we need to step forward to those challenges and live up to the name of Jesus. That our behavior and our conduct would represent Jesus Christ. And in doing so, Lord, we pray that more people would come to Christ. That our behavior and the way we tackle the things that come up to us in the week would represent Jesus Christ in a way that is just so profound, that people look to us and ask why and how. And we can look at them and answer Jesus Christ and our relationship with with our heavenly Father. We thank you so much, Lord, and we ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
An announcements. L- lest we forget, NavLife is on Saturday, November twenty-first. It starts at six thirty. Um, the topic is lasting relationships, and we're going to be looking specifically at gaslighting. This is not a NavLife session to miss. I mean, none of them are, but if you have missed any in the past, now is the time to make amends, ensure that you're a part of this webinar. It is extremely practical, extremely informative, and extremely beneficial. So we're encouraging those, share, spread the message out. We want to see if we can improve improve the numbers, reach out to as many people as possible. It's an indirect evangelistic, um, tool, and it also can help the lives of others. Um, our gospel meeting entitled Simply Christians is December thirteen through to the fifteenth. Seven P M nightly. The topics, why Jesus, why Christianity, why baptism. Very simple, very to the point. And we we want to spread the message as early as possible. Get individuals in excited about it, get people interested, so that we can touch as many lives as possible. We know a lot of people are struggling in this particular time, and now more than ever, the gospel has the power to save. So we want to, we want to ensure that we we praise that as much as possible. Um, birthdays, we know that today is Brother Tennant's birthday. Um, just going to ask, I am not in the vicinity to swing a foot, I've heated. So I'm going to ask Sean or Elliot to be my feet today. Please, if you love your father, give him a solid kick from the Bible class teacher. In love. In love.
Love.
Right, God in that here, you know.
That's disappointing. I just have to ask them to do it on Sunday. Um, please note that on Thursday is Jaden's birthday, and on Friday is Sister Judy Anne. So we can please call and message these individuals to tell them happy birthday. I'm going to make sure that we sing happy birthday to David since today is the day. So, um, you can, on, everybody who wants to sing, feel free to unmute your mic. So that is not me alone singing. And we're going to sing happy birthday to Brother David. With a one, a two, a one, two, three. Happy birthday to you. Thank you, everybody. Some people never, never caught the the lyrics that I was trying to add on at the last part, but we'll allow it. Um, so our next meeting will be on Saturday, six thirty for NavLife. Until then, I want us to remember the mess, the words of the message. And give ourselves a gift throughout this week and continuously, gift of praise, gift of purity, and a gift of pardon. Alright, thank you, everyone. Oh, announcements from Brother Ron. Oh, collecting clothes, linen and shoes for the recent flood victims. So if you have anything that we can donate, please, um, speak to Brother Rowan to establish how exactly you can drop it off. Alright, so clothes, linen and shoes for recent flood victims. Please, if we have things that we can give away, let us take the effort to do so now. Alright, if we have no other announcements.
Stephen.
Yes, Brother Genna.
I'm just sure let the members know that they can get the flyer, so that uh, they can ensure that they circulate to as many of their friends and family as possible. They, the flyer for the campaign.
Okay, okay.
I I'll I'll send it out.
Alright, thanks much.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, we I'm going to ignore Kirk. We are dismissed. Um, thank you for tuning in, and I hope that you have an eventful rest of night and rest of week.